Alright. Well, we are in Fullerton, California. That's the police department right there to the right. We're just arriving for the city council meeting this evening. So far, they're not showing too much out on the streets. I might go for a little bit more of a walk tonight. We'll see what the layout is. It's good to see everybody. We've got thirteen viewers. Go ahead and tweet. And if you could do me a favor, tweet to the Fullerton Police Department and City Council. They no longer have to expect us. We have arrived. In the press is here. If you could tweet that out for me, I would appreciate it. And, uh, you know, you can always let KTLA know that we're here. Rumor has it that was a particular individual. Uh, that, uh, people were having, one of the particular individuals, people were having a run-in with, uh, on Saturday. And their news van is here. I'm, uh, coming at you live with, uh, uh, just myself tonight and a few, uh, anonymous and concerned individuals. And we'll see who's over at the council meeting in momentarily. Yep. Hey, I can actually type. Good evening, everybody. That doesn't work that way. Wow. I'm learning how to actually type in my, um, Android for the first time. Forgive me. Uh, good thing this Android is nice and tough. It did take a pretty good fall the other day when it smashed out of my hand. We're still looking for a place to park.
We'll be there in a minute.
We got cops right here. Why don't you keep going straight for a minute? You don't want to contribute us with your vehicle right now, do you? We are live. I'm muting for a sec. Alright, we're back at you. We're outside now. We are in Fullerton, heading to the city council meeting. Once again, we can see a few news vans this evening. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I was only there mu- myself in the morning. I had to attend, uh, to some other things in the afternoon and the evening. But yeah, those guys, they were heroes that day. Certainly, uh, upholding the safety and everything for everybody. What's up, guys? Evening. How's it going? Pretty good. Right on. Hey, nice to meet you, McKenna. That's going, right on. Good to see you again, bro.
Yeah, me too.
It's been a while.
So you guys going inside or staying out here or what?
I think I'm gonna be, I may stay outside and go in and out. I don't know.
Okay. I'm, I'm planning on staying out here, um, just to, I don't know where the guy livestreamed from. I think Patty's in there right now.
Right on. It's good to talk to her this evening because, be good to talk to her this evening. That was a, that was a real joke what happened there, you know? I was all the way down at the transportation center. I'm sure she was completely clear from the original order to disperse.
The air, dispersal area.
That's ridiculous. That's Crossbones here with us tonight, everybody.
Oh, my God, Adam!
Hi.
One of my Occupy friends. Adam's somewhere around. He, he got arrested.
Who did?
Adam.
Trevor Adam.
Yeah, yeah. I think Patty.
Alright, we're live, baby. We are live and we are at the courthouse. And I'm glad to have you. On the phone, we got, alright, you push it. Push it. We got our technical support says it's going fucking big tonight. So, stay with us. I see a bunch of Boy Scouts that are bigger than me and that always keeps me out. I just gotta say that right now. There's Boy Scouts and they're full grown men, so be wary. Boy Scouts that are bigger than you. Hey, did you, uh, get to see what happened? You at the, see the kind of events that happened Saturday?
I did not see the turn of events. I mean, I saw Patty's recorded footage. I saw some of y'all's footage.
Uh, I'm gonna go inside for a minute. We'll take a look out on the inside. Good evening. Looks good and friendly this evening so far, folks. Wasn't so friendly the other day. Justice Warriors. I think I know who that is. Hey, good to see you. Good. Good head out front. See out front. I wanna know why I can't get that light to work. Trying to see. Trying to figure out how to set up the LED light on the phone itself. One of our favorite, uh, mainstream medias here would definitely be Telemundo or, uh, Channel fifty-two. You see down here, ladies and gentlemen. They're in fact really, uh, one of the more respectable mainstream media outlets that exists. Uh, they tend to cover more of these stories than any of the other mainstream outlets. And, uh, all of Southern California, all over Oxnard, all over Anaheim and, and the rest of the area. Glad to see you guys here. Seriously, you guys are awesome. We appreciate Telemundo cincuenta y dos very much. Very important. They're one of the best. They're, like I said, they're one of the few mainstream medias, uh, that really, really reports these stories. Whether it just be Kelly Thomas or, uh, Robert Rodriguez, you know, to Alfonso Limón, to, uh, all of the difficulties that are going around. I remember seeing them in many of the, uh, different cases out here from Manuel Diaz and Joey Asavero out in Anaheim. Uh, so, uh, we appreciate them. Make sure, uh, if you have the opportunity, check out their websites and see if you can't get them to, uh, you know, perhaps translate for you. You might find a lot of interesting news going on in your area that you're unaware of because it's being covered by, uh, a particular news medium you're not used to finding that information on. And on that subject, you can go online nowadays in most cases and seek your news in any country and find some sort of translator to be able to understand specifically what's going on. Good city council meeting. Like I said, security forces seem minimal at the time. I'm sure they're ready to increase in size at any given moment. Let's see, uh, police station across the street. A little, the lighting isn't so good. I think I'm gonna go inside, see what's going on. The meeting's gonna be starting in a, in a short while. Perhaps at least start the meeting on the inside. People are still being seated, it looks like. See what time it is. Right, right. That may be one of the areas I consider going to the overflow.
Concerned citizens to show up here tonight. Kelly Thomas, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. You are?
Yeah.
Can I do an interview with you real quick?
Um, not really.
That's cool. You can do a voice interview with me if you want. You don't wanna be on camera?
No, it's okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, you're doing great, but don't, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot of people in there.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah.
A lot of concerned citizens here today.
Are we gonna go ahead and just push the, uh, the Fullerton stream for the inside? Or should we go, consider sitting inside tonight? We sat inside so many times. I'm kinda interested in what's gonna happen.
Overflow. Yeah.
We're gonna...
Can we hook up to the network? Can we, can we save our bandwidth?
Oh, I, I'm not really, I'm not really worried about wherever we go to the library.
We should keep our livestream going because
Yeah.
They, uh, as soon as something comes up irrelevant, their, their stream will go out or something. I'd like to document this night correctly.
Sure there'll be plenty of...
You're, you're pressed, so you should be, you should get a front row seat up there.
You want me to go in and get some pictures while you take, take care of the stream out here for a while?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know, I don't know. They, they said they're already full. I should be...
You should be able to press it right in there.
I'm gonna get my photos out here. I don't care about photos inside.
No, I'm talking about livestreaming inside.
I don't, I think we've got the livestream inside. Is that where we wanna be tonight? Everybody, where would you like the livestream for In the Press to be? Would you be con- interested in it being inside or outside? He tripped in the bush. Poor AJ tripped in the bush. I'll go ahead and put that vote up again. Would you like us to consider going to the library and sitting inside, perhaps with a group of people there? Trying to get inside here or just covering the story from the outside at this time? Sorry about pushing you in the bush there.
Yeah, thank you.
Making you look good, so...
But don't shh. Good, uh...
We got two votes of wanting me to sit inside. I don't know if I'm gonna get inside.
Go press it right up to the front. Get a better livestream than the government show.
Alright, we're gonna see about getting inside. Okay, we've got the livestream up. We've got Chief Hughes here this evening. Hello, Chief. I guess he wasn't, uh, saying hi to me this evening, so this is the inside for the, uh, meeting this evening. They do livestream from the inside very often. It looks like they've got, no standing? So this is, is where the press is in the back here? Is that where I'm? Okay. Well, it looks like there's standing room with the press, huh?
Yeah, there you go.
There we go. Pardon me. Pardon me. Scootin' by if you can make it. Which side should I scoot you on? Ah, I think that was a good decision. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. We've got the night is right. We've got a number of people from Anaheim. Lori Klein. We've got Jean. Evening, Jean. Okay, you guys made the decision? I'm inside. We've got Anaheim outside in case anyone get a hold of me. I like the inside. Save me as a commentation. Well, being inside suits me well. I won't have to talk so much this evening. Thanks for being there, everybody. This is in fact the Fullerton City Council meeting. They do have their own stream as well. Uh, but once again, at least you know the stream should be unimpeded. I hadn't picked up an agenda for this evening yet. If you look closer, you're gonna notice Ron is down on the, uh, right-hand side in the front. I believe his daughter's sitting within this evening. We've got George Olivo in the house this evening. It's a whole new world, huh? It's a whole new world.
No, it's awesome.
Absolutely. Oh, livestreaming? For sure. Yeah, yeah. Nice, nice. Yeah, it does pretty good in regards to the streaming technology. I am using Ustream right now as well. Perhaps it was one of the two or three that were up. Yeah, yeah. Ustream, Ustream. It's free to use with limitations, you know, based upon your needs, you know, and your audience. And then you can pay more if, if need be. Well, it's a good night for handkerchiefs. Some inquisitive photo generous. And we have, there could be Patty right there. Of course, she was arrested the other day. Some of us, it's, uh, important to us to bring the story. I think Crossbones is outside right now. He may have gone over to the overflow. But I know Crossbones is outside, I believe. PM Beers is inside. I know George Olivo was inside a moment ago. I didn't see if he was gonna be streaming tonight. So we've got at least four streamers here this evening. Sweetly, little... In the press. At In the Press, yeah. In the Press, no speech. Yeah, I, I'd be willing to stay standing for whoever, you know? I don't know. It's, I, I, I'll at least, I'll let anybody sit wherever I'm standing. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't care, but you know, you gotta talk them into it. I don't know. I think it's a... New Jersey, Monmouth County. I was in, uh, Union Beach. I was on the demo crew, but we also had our own kitchen and delivery for hot food. They were one of the groups that worked with us. They gave me the jacket.
Cool. I, I grew up right down the road from Howard Beach.
Okay. I'm not sure, what beach?
Howard Beach in, uh, Queens.
Okay, that's, oh, okay, oh, okay. Yeah, over in New York. Yeah, I had some friends over there too, but, uh, yeah, I ended up, I never got out of Jersey. But I love, it was great, you know? It was, I'm gonna be going back there soon, I hope. Yeah, you guys heard me. I'll be trying to visit you guys within the next second or, you know, first, end of the first quarter this year. Yeah, I was looking like they brought the, uh, the fire department in. Evening, everybody. I can still talk to you for a little while. Work has started. Doesn't matter, no. Starting now.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Seaborn?
Here.
Mayor Chapey?
Here. The meeting this evening is going to be dedicated to three special women who have passed away since our last meeting. They have helped make Fullerton a very better place in all the things that they've done. They've given so much of their lives and energy and resources. And we're grateful for the life of Dottie, Elaine, and Lenell. Dottie Young was a teacher for twenty years at Golden Hill. And she worked tirelessly with her, her husband, Jim Young, who was a Rotary District Governor. And she was influential in helping the Friends of Jazz, the Muck and Taller, and Fullerton Arboretum. Elaine Redfield was a strong supporter of the arts and music such as the Pacific Sympathy and the Cal State Fullerton and Opera Pacific. She wrote a famous letter to Henry Sigristum in the early nineteen eighties asking him to donate some of his bean field to create what is now the Orange County Performing Arts Center. Lenell Sideman, Sideman was very important in developing the Citizens Environmental Education Program at the Arboretum and at Cal State Fullerton for over the last ten years. She was a junior high teacher for many years and eventually became principal at Parks Junior High. And she was my seventh grade science teacher. So, we are now moving on to our invocation. And we have Father Jim from Saint Mary's Church who will lead us. And Father Jim, I understand your church last year celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary. Can you give us a little spiel about what your church has been doing in the community?
My dear, uh, thank you. Twenty-six hundred families on our, on our registration that we may allow through every single, when we have meetings. Uh, we have lots of services on Saturday and Sunday. We're very grateful for our new parking lot across the street. We are located across the street next to the community center. Um, uh, we do outreach to homeless and to the poor, uh, once a week on Thursday morning from about nine o'clock to eleven o'clock. Um, about 60 families come there right now. And we give lunches to about 20 to 30 homeless, uh, men and women who come as well. Uh, we do outreach in the communities, uh, different ways, talking out, reading, libraries, and schools. And I think our community has done a great thing, 100 years, we've been 100 years. And we and our family do Fullerton quite well, and we hope to have another 100 also.
Well, I'm sure the warmth and service of the fellowship we represent will give you at least another 100 years. Would you please lead us in an invocation?
Loving Creator God, we thank God that we have a community on this evening to deliberate, uh, the needs of our community here in Fullerton. May you guide us with your wisdom and direct us with your strength to accomplish what you want us to do in this community. Uh, we strive to be a loving community that creates an atmosphere where people can come and be safe and happy. May the council members who serve us, our public servants, do so well on this evening and to deliberate what needs to be done. May we as a community reach out to those around us and continue to love our neighbor. Let us pray for all those, the three women that we acknowledge today who have passed away, and also for the soul of Kelly Thomas that we go for. We say this through Christ are the ones. Amen.
Thank you, Father Jim. This evening, we have Boy Scout Troop Number 1201. Thank you for showing me, I did a right to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. They have been serving this community for 95 years. I wonder if the Scout Master would come up and give us a little history and tell us what you're doing in the community today?
Good evening. Uh, like the mayor said, we are Troop 1201. Uh, we've been chartered for 95 years out of First Presbyterian Church of Fullerton, uh, serving Fullerton and Mahara. Uh, we participate in numerous service projects throughout the city. Uh, some of those have been scouting for food, Relay for Life, uh, numerous Eagle projects that have been done both for the city and for various community organizations. And we provide a good outdoor, uh, outlet for outdoor activities for the kids, especially here, you don't see the forest as much as somebody out in woods or...
How many of those kids have you graduated in that 95 years?
Well, we've had 123, including one last night.
Would you be so kind as to lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Those of you in uniforms, please salute. Those not, please. You ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all!
That's a lie. Hey, Kelly!
At this time, we get a invitation by Coast to Coast Foundation.
Um, we've just been looking for an opportunity to be more involved with projects that are going on around Fullerton.
No, that's not Coast to Coast. Do air is human?
Certainly in Fullerton.
Good evening, Mayor Chafee and members of the council. Corporal J.D. DiCaprio here. I've been a police officer in this city for approximately 28 years. And for those that don't know, I've been assigned to working with the homeless for the past 12 years. I'm honored to be here tonight. This is a great opportunity to give you a brief update of kind of what we've been doing. Uh, we have two different... Uh, when I'm a police officer, obviously I'm out working with the homeless. And when I'm not in uniform, I'm out volunteering my time with Coast to Coast Foundation. Uh, I've been coordinating with them since 2009. And, uh, just to tell you a little bit about the organization. Uh, Coast to Coast came along at a time when we were really lacking resources in the community for the homeless. And since then, uh, we started to collaborate on different issues and different needs. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of the things that Coast to Coast Foundation does for the homeless is off, likely by an officer program. Uh, it's not just myself, but I have three other partners, so it's a team of four. We work various days and evenings throughout the week, so we have seven days of coverage. But when we come across homeless folks that are in need, uh, Coast to Coast Foundation will provide for us bus passes when needed. Uh, they'll provide for us $5 gift cards to the local restaurants when we come across someone who's obviously hungry and can't make it through a feed that day. Um, one of the other programs that, uh, they're very helpful in providing for us is a motel voucher program. And we primarily use that for two different reasons. If we come across a mother and young children and we need a place to put them up for a night or two, uh, that's extremely important because sometimes it takes quite a bit of time for us to get resources in place, um, typically throughout the county of Orange. So, between the, uh, the bus passes, the food vouchers, the motel vouchers, um, those we use on a regular basis. Uh, on my off time, I feed with Coast to Coast. We're down at La Palma Park at one of their offsite locations that the city has designated down there across from the park. And we do what's called a sack lunch program. We feed, uh, the first and third Sunday of every month. Um, we start our feed at 2:30 and we prepare approximately 200 sack lunches uh, right there at that location, and it all gets done within about an hour. Aside from that, um, one of our focuses is actually on the three main holidays throughout the year being Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. During those times, we prepare hot meals. And this year, for Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, we prepared around 500 to 600 hot meals at each of those feeds. Um, we typically have 60 to 80 volunteers, sometimes as many as 200 volunteers that show up at those locations on those dates. So, uh, that's just some, a little bit about some of the programs. Uh, recently, we had some of our folks here in the city reach out to, uh, our brothers and sisters in Anaheim and talk to them a little bit about their homeless population and what they're doing down in their city. Um, I was called into the city of Anaheim to attend a couple of their meetings. And out of that, they created a program very similar to our outreach program in this city. Uh, they actually assigned immediately eight officers to help with the homeless in their city. So, we're collaborating closely with them. Uh, one of the programs that Coast to Coast, we really pride ourselves on is each and every day I'm out there interacting with homeless people. And on certain given occasions, I do run into people that have options. And in talking with them, if it appears that there's an option of reuniting them back with family or friends, we actually, through Coast to Coast Foundation and the money we've raised, we actually send them back to family or friends. And that can include anything from a bus trip to wherever they're going, or as of recently, um, we put a young lady on an airplane and sent her back to family. So, we make contact with the family and ensure that they're gonna take them in. Um, and then we provide the money for the transportation for that. So, I have some numbers here. Uh, in the last, well, basically since '09, um, we've placed, um, approximately 12 people back with family or friends. And out of those 12, none of them, I keep in contact with quite a few of them, none of them have returned back to the state of homelessness. So, you know, with that program, you know, we consider that the perfect storm, 100% success rate. Um, we obviously can't do that with everybody because not everybody has those options. But certainly when we come across somebody who is willing and able and has those resources in place, then we want to be able to have the money set aside to make that happen. So, that's one of our key programs. Um, just in the last couple of months with our collaboration with the officers down in Anaheim, and I'm working very closely with them, obviously, um, mentoring some of their programs down there. But Anaheim has stepped up and, uh, through Coast to Coast Foundation is also supporting their program. Uh, they have reunited four of their homeless people back with family or friends. Completed that relocation, so, um, we're pretty proud of that. And, uh, we're proud that we're working closely with the city of Anaheim. We're well aware that, uh, when it came time to open the Armory, that it wasn't just our city that stepped up with extra funding to get it open early, but it was Anaheim that, uh, met that same obligation and we were able to open it early. So, um, I, I think some of these things are, uh, are definitely groundbreaking. They're historical. And these are the kind of things that we want to build on. Um, the best I can tell you is, you know, the only way to, to get out there and, and, you know, find out what the needs are, is to come out and volunteer. So, um, some of the people here in the audience, some of the people up at the dais have been out to volunteer with us. I'm gonna open that invitation to everybody. Um, the first and third Sunday at La Palma Park, 2:30 in the afternoon, everybody's welcome. And then, of course, I know it's on the holiday, but if perhaps family permits and you can come out on Easter, Thanksgiving, or Christmas, we'd love to have you come out there. We do do a couple fundraisers during the course of the year. Uh, those fundraisers are really what makes this possible. And the other thing I wanted to mention is Coast to Coast Foundation, uh, is 100% volunteer-based. So, there is absolutely nobody on payroll, so all the money that comes in goes right back into our community. Or in the case of Anaheim, we're working with them now. So, okay, thank you for your time.
Marie, before you sit down, Marie, do you want to introduce yourself? And make sure you, um, tell everybody, unless the mayor's going to, about your fundraiser this Saturday night.
It's, um, a privilege and an honor to serve the community. It's, it's all about service and I'm glad we're in a platform that we can actually be of service to everybody that needs help. And, um, with your support, we can grow programs and put everything back into the community. So, we do appreciate the continued support and all of our projects that we're trying to expand, especially into Anaheim, which there's a huge need there too. I'm grateful and thank you. And we do have a fundraiser if you want to support us. It's this Saturday. Uh, it's casino night over at the Tuscan Club. It's, um, 4 to 8, if you guys can make it. If not, we'd like to take donations online anytime. Thank you so much.
Do you feel strong enough to pair some paper? I must explain, you will not find my name on a parking space out there in the VIP spaces. Rather, I've chosen to give up my space to volunteer of the month. So, you have an official space, lower reserved for councilperson. You are among the VIPs. This will go up on February 1. You are the volunteer of the month for February. Now, I, I have to remark a few more things. You are the principal source of creating Coast to Coast. You continue with your time. Among the things you do, you have a garage somewhere. And you fill that garage with blankets and water and jackets and anything that homeless people might need. And occasionally policemen come by and put that in the trunk of their car. Almost every day, and when it runs low, you replenish it. Now, it's been said, the reason volunteers are not paid is not because they're worthless, it's because they are priceless. You are indeed a very priceless person, all of you. Thank you for caring and helping to make Fullerton a fabulous city. But all the yellow shirts, please come up here and join us for a picture. And someone, a couple who are not in yellow shirts also, who are connected with Coast to Coast. On the agenda, it says closed session report, but there isn't any. Uh, because of the interest in the jury trial that was recently held and concluded, I'm going to, with the permission of the council, move item 12 to this point on our agenda.
I support that. That's a motion.
Okay. Well, it's, it's just kind of like consensus, if that's all right. Okay? Item 12. I'm going to turn this over to Chief of Police Hughes to give us a report. And that will be followed by the city attorney.
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, thank you. Mayor, City Councilmembers, Dan Hughes, your police chief. Uh, I'll just make a few brief remarks regarding, uh, this incident. First, I think it's important to, uh, acknowledge that the criminal case involving these former officers has absolutely no impact whatsoever on the decisions I have already made regarding the, the employment status of these former officers. regarding the employment status of these former officers. Secondly, I understand that one of the officers has alleged that I have wrongfully terminated him and that he wants his job back. I want this community to know that I am confident in the decision-making that I have made regarding these former officers. And I intend to vigorously defend my position and my decisions in each and every step of the employment grievance process that they have. And then, just lastly, although there has been a criminal case on the state level that is over and we are in the process of the administrative hearings, I think it's also important to know that I have consistently been meeting with the investigator from the FBI. And as of even last week, have met and renewed my vow that I will personally assist them and our department will cooperate with them fully while they investigate this case and make a determination of their possible involvement in it. And so, those are just a few remarks that I would make to you.
May I ask you about the hiring practices? Has that changed in the last year or so?
Yes, sir, they have. Actually, they've changed drastically. So, there's been a number of changes we have done in our police department. Obviously, we know that Michael Ginocco of the Office of Independent Review came in, made fifteen-hour recommendations. We have completed almost all of those recommendations. However, one of the other issues that I looked at when looking at our police department was our hiring standards. So, we have not only improved those hiring standards, but we've also changed the method in which we look for or recruit our police officers. And so, I'm happy to report to you that just last week, we graduated three police officers from the police academy. And that is the first time in twenty years that we've actually hired police officers and done a recruiting concept and it sent them through the academy. We are generally speaking, taking officers from other police departments and have brought them over as laterals. And so, for the first time in twenty years, we are now taking entry-level officers. And we have a great pool, and we have three more that are getting started as well. In addition to our recruiting standards, we have also changed the way that we do our background investigations. One of the issues that, in looking at it, that I was concerned about is that we had a significant problem with nepotism. And so, sometimes there was a problem with ensuring that the backgrounds were done, in my belief, properly or at least thoroughly. And so, for that reason, we have actually hired an outside company to conduct all background investigations of all personnel who we consider to be police officers. And they make those recommendations on whether or not that person successfully passes that background investigation or not.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council of Chief Hughes?
Yes, I have a question. Chief, you mentioned that you are working with the FBI with respect to an investigation. Does that mean that the possibility of a federal criminal lawsuit exists?
It does exist. I have spoken to them. They are, again, continuing with their investigation. They are investigating a possible civil rights violation. And again, I have renewed our department's full support and cooperation with their investigation.
At this point, though, you don't know if there will be a federal prosecution.
I do not know.
Do you have any idea how long it will take for that decision to be made?
I do not know.
All right, thank you.
I think there's a parallel there with the Rodney King situation. Could you enlighten us on that?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is refer any questions regarding the investigation from the FBI to the FBI. I think that would be a probably more appropriate manner to handle it.
Well, I think if I recall, the officers involved in the Rodney King meeting were found not guilty. And then, there was a subsequent federal criminal charge brought, and that did stick, if I remember. So, we don't know what the parallel will be.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. I'd like the city attorney to perhaps weigh in on the procedures that we as a council take and what the status of the city is in this matter.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The first part is the criminal proceedings. And as the chief has just indicated, the city, the city council, really has no decision-making role with respect to the criminal procedures. That's a determination at this point in time, as the FBI, the U.S. Attorney's Office, where they choose to choose not to proceed with criminal indictments is entirely their jurisdiction. This city and this city council has no decision-making role with respect to those proceedings. Secondly, with regard to the employment status, I've said this in the past, but I think because there's some new phases, some time has passed, that I'd take a brief moment to go through the process regarding the employment rights and processes for the city of Fullerton, recognizing that police officers as public officials and as subject to the police's rights have certain legal rights and opportunities of appeal that they can afford themselves of as a matter of law. Our process is one in the city of Fullerton in which the department involved initially reviews and makes a determination as to what has occurred regarding the actions of a given employee and makes a determination as to whether certain things should occur with respect to discipline and possible termination. In this particular case, there was a series of officers involved, and Chief Hughes made a determination regarding three of those officers to proceed to termination. And that matter was then reviewed by the city manager. He reviewed those determinations and sustained the determination by the chief. At that point in time, the officers have a right of appeal. That right of appeal, they can assert. And in this case, all three have asserted that right of appeal, though they've received notices of termination, to appeal those decisions. Their status currently as regards the city of Fullerton is they have been terminated. With respect to the right of appeal, the next step is that with that right of appeal is a right to have an independent arbitrator review evidentially the facts and circumstances surrounding the decision reached by the chief and the city manager, and at which time, he will issue an advisory opinion with respect to his findings as he reviews that certain circumstances.